Call to order. The regular meeting of the City of Dickinson Commission for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Mr. Gah, the order of business.
Thank you, President Decker. This agenda was put out quite early last week due to the Thanksgiving holiday. So there have been a couple of things that have changed that we're going to pull and aren't just quite ready for your review yet. Under public safety, the police department, they're working on getting a contract for some electric work. We'll pull that from tonight's agenda. And also, under public works, related to a compactor bid approval, we'll also pull that. And those will come back to you relatively soon.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the amended order of business? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the amended order of business. So move. We have a motion to approve the amended order of business.
Second.
With a second. All in favor of the amended order of business, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish Now I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on consent agenda. We do have a timetable item this evening, and that'll... I don't have a time on it, so... Do we have a time? Okay, it's just going to be at the end? Okay. Kind of with our non-timetable. So, all right. Mr. Gah, we start with administration and finance.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and commissioners. The first thing is an amendment to the joint powers agreement for the city and county planner. This is something that's been in existence for a few years. Last year, it was amended. So Stark County has a planner that's not necessarily needed over there 100%. We have a little extra work here, so we've hired their planner on. We pay for currently 40% of their wages and benefits. In front of you is an amendment proposed by Stark County to increase that level to 50%. So the city would assume 50% of their benefit costs and their salary costs. That's something that was brought up during the budget process, ahead of the budget process, and with your direction. We did include that in the 2020 budget, so that is budgeted for. There is a second part of the amendment that was not necessarily planned for in the budget, and that's related to the professional development cost and continuing education certifications for the county planner. They would like for the city to also pay 50% of that, which, as I stated in the memo, is a little abnormal. Normally, it's kind of a flat fee cost, and that's what we've done in the past. So that's something really for the commission to consider if they want to accept the whole amendment, or maybe only parts of it, or none of it. If you were going to accept this professional development, I would perhaps tie a dollar amount maximum to it, maybe not over $500 per year.
What is the estimated professional development cost?
About $1,000 to $1,500 is what they think the full-time price, the full cost of a conference and certifications would be.
I don't see anything wrong with going 50/50 on the whole thing.
No. Why don't we set a cost that we think it's going to be $1,500, and why don't we just say $750? No more than $750.
It can always be adjusted if it needs to be.
Yeah.
You want that in a formal motion?
Any other discussion, commissioners? Any concerns?
Mr. President.
We'll have the agreement and put in the total. I guess, Mr. Josephson's in the audience. Mr. Josephson, what do you think are estimated costs for your professional development on an annual basis?
Good morning. Good afternoon, President Decker, city commissioners. Figured it out to approximately $1,500 a year.
All right. So if we set it at $750, I think we're good. So, does it cost more than that? Come and talk to us.
We'll figure it out.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right. So we amend the amended joint powers agreement.
Correct. I'd make that motion to approve.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve with the amendment. Any further discussion? Questions for staff on this joint powers agreement? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Deputy City Administrator Carlson, you have the 2020 fee schedule?
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Presenting the 2020 fee schedule from the last commission meeting, and after the work session, there has been no changes. So as far as the fee schedule goes, I'd like to present it as is, what's presented in your packet. And staff would like recommendation to have the resolution passed, and it would be Resolution 32-2019 for that fee schedule.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on Resolution 32-2019, the 2020 fee schedule? Any comments? Now I'd look for a motion on 32-2019.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Gah, we have the Dickinson Convention and Visitors Bureau, a consideration to appoint new members.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. It is the responsibility of the city commission to appoint the board of directors for the convention and visitors bureau. The board has submitted two names for reelection, and then two new members to fill vacant terms. The two members seeking second or additional three-year terms from November 19th to 2022 will be Clayton Altman's and Elaine Myron. And then two new board members for the same three-year terms, Tom Faith and Jim Bridger.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on this member appointment to the CBB?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the appointments to the Dickinson Convention and Visitors Bureau.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Gah, we have a couple of reports.
Yes, first off, a couple of thank you notes. The first one from the Sunrise Youth Bureau. We greatly appreciate your continued support and promise to provide our best service to help youth and their families in our community. This agreement will help us with our future budgets by knowing ahead of time the amount Sunrise will receive, signed by Holly Prowse, their director. As a reminder, the commission did approve an annual funding agreement for that group, and they were very, very appreciative of that. And then also, related to our senior citizen grants from the senior center in New England, they received a grant for $2,875 to install new doors for the senior center, and they've sent this letter saying it's been completed, and please extend our thanks to the city commission for their kind assistance. Couple of nice partnerships there with other agencies. And then the other report, Leadership Dickinson, that's a program for high school students here in town, and once a year, they spend a little time touring some facility, facilities, and they join you here for kind of a mock commission meeting and have lunch with you. That will occur on the 15th of January. Rita should have already sent you a schedule reminder for that.
I think last year, they, we just met.
Public Works.
Out at the Public Works. This year, we're going to come here in the morning. I can't remember the time we had.
Their tickets were open at 1:00.
Right. I think it's something like 10:30.
About 10:30, they'll be here.
Yeah, 10:30, 11 o'clock.
And then spend some time with you.
Well, just kind of what we did with the high school class, what Commissioner Trustum and I did, and Mrs. Carlson and Mr. Kubis sat here, took some questions, kind of explained how we operate, and then we'll have lunch with them, and then they're going to have some additional tours with the city. I know they really enjoy going out to the police department and using the simulator and going into the fire department and have that tour, and we always give them a tour of the wastewater treatment facility, so they get a firsthand look at what comes in from the city.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gah. We have no items from public safety this evening because we had an amended agenda. We'll move on to engineering. Mr. Kubis, you have a master service agreement with Highlands.
Yes, thank you, President Decker, commissioners. This master service agreement is very similar to the one we did with KLJ a couple of years ago, or a couple of meetings ago. And this is just an update to a master service agreement we had signed with Highlands in January of 2018. And again, the MSA was for, that MSA was for a two-year duration, so it's up here shortly, and city staff would like to extend the MSA for an additional five years, same term extension that we did with KLJ. The MSA, again, does not bind the city to any payment to Highlands for engineering, nor does it guarantee any future contracts for Highlands Engineering. The MSA is simply the framework under which all the future agreements will follow. The conditions of the MSA were previously reviewed by legal, that was in 2018, and this amendment would only amount to an extension of the term. City staff recommends approval, and I'd be open to any questions.
Mr. Kubis, was there anything that, I know you said it was reviewed in 2018, is there anything that legal counsel needs to look at again in 2020, or there's no changes whatsoever?
There's no changes to the MSA. The amendment that you have is simply a one-page document that really just refers to dates.
Any other questions for Mr. Kubis on this MSA?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the master service agreement extension with Highlands Engineering.
We have a motion to approve the MSA.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Excuse me, aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have a design engineering task order for West Ridge Drive.
Yes, thank you, President Decker, commissioners. This is a follow-up to a work session item we had about a month ago, that Andrew Schrank from Highlands Engineering came and presented to the commission. It was regarding street improvements to the concrete streets in the West Ridge subdivision. As you remember, they had approximately three options that they presented to us at that meeting that ranged from full reconstruction and many millions of dollars to this option, which they called Option 1 in that report, which was roughly a million dollars here. The number's refined a bit to $985,000 construction cost. This would be the design contract for engaging Highlands to prepare the plans, do the final design, and put together street improvement plans for those concrete streets in West Ridge Drive. This contract is estimated to not exceed $45,770. City staff has reviewed the scope of the agreement and recommends approval. With that, I'd open it up to any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? When are we with this agreement, and will that road be looked at immediately this spring coming up?
So the road had been looked at with that...
But I understand that.
Right, as far as improvement.
Not too much looked at, I mean, the repairs start this coming spring.
Absolutely, yep. As soon as we can get plans out, which we hope to late winter, we'll put the plans to bid and go through our standard bidding process, and then have construction throughout the summer. We hope that it's a, you know, relatively speaking, an easy construction project for the traveling public. Since we have a whole lane to work in, we can shift two lanes of traffic to that other lane, and we've done that in the past when we've made some city repairs on West Ridge Drive, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis? Now I'd look for a motion on this design engineering task order for West Ridge Drive.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Kubis? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public Works item is, was removed, so we're moving on to planning. We have some final plats, and we have Planning Director Hadley presenting these.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the first item, it will be Resolution Number 33. It's a plat along 112th Avenue Southwest. It went through the planning commission meeting on November 20th with no opposition, and staff would recommend approval as presented.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley on the West Valart addition? This is Resolution 33-2019, so I'd look for a motion on 33-2019.
So move.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, we have the Sickler subdivision.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be Resolution 34-2019. It is in the ETZ as well. It's up, it's kind of northeast of town, up by Radiar Based Hill. Large parcel, 40-acre parcel. It went through the same planning and zoning meeting on November 20th. There was no opposition on this one. Staff would also recommend approval of 34-2019.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on 34-2019, the Sickler subdivision?
Mr. President, Mr. Hadley, I see they're going to build a home on an event venue or a special use permit. What would that be?
What would the event?
Yeah, the special use permit.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't been defined yet exactly what they would want to do there, because they have to actually apply once this plat is done. They can build a home, they can build a garage, they can do normal things. Then they would need to come through the planning commission and then yourselves once again for a special use permit for a venue. I don't really want to talk about their plans because they're really not finalized at this point.
As long as they understand that once they come up with a special event or a special use, it may or may not get approved, depending on what it is.
It's correct. I visited with these folks. Yeah, I visited with these folks prior to them purchasing it, and they were very aware of the plat, and then also the special use permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Hadley on this Sickler subdivision?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the Sickler subdivision plat.
We have a motion to approve the Sickler subdivision plat 34-2019.
Second.
With a second. Any further comments or questions for Mr. Hadley? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, the William Johnson subdivision.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this is a plat within the ETZ along 10th Avenue East. This item also went through the November 20th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There wasn't any opposition to this particular request. There were some questions as to the alignment and what the owner was doing with the existing structures that were in the area, but they're actually not on this plat. So with that, staff recommended, and the planning commission recommended approval of 35-2019.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on the William Johnson subdivision, Resolution 35-2019?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve 35-2019 with a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, we have three special use permits, and the first item up is the Fire and Ice Group Home and HVAC Shop.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A special use permit that went through the same planning and zoning meeting, November 20th, 2019, located 628th Street Southeast. It's actually in the ETZ as well, directly east of the Mobile Home Court, south of town. Access, went through all of the reviews through the county staff and also city staff. What they're doing is they have an able house onsite. They're utilizing a lot of the structures that are onsite there. They're using one house onsite for an able facility, and then they're also moving their Fire and Ice Facility office. Minimal storage, most of their trucks go home with their folks at night, so the trucks that stay there will be parked. They have kind of a nice plan where they developed it, they're going to be out of sight, out of mind, behind buildings, and then they're going to do some refurbishing and finishing of some of the barn and unfinished structures there as part of the site. It actually is quite a nice site, is kind of out of the area. There wasn't any opposition or comment on this during the November 20th meeting. Staff and the planning commission recommended approval of 36-2019.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hadley? Hearing no questions, I look for a motion on 36-2019.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. With a second. Any further questions, comments on the Fire and Ice Group Home and HVAC Shop? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, we have a wireless communication tower off Gum Avenue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. 1398 Gum Avenue is basically the site of the proposed splash park that Park and Rec is building along, wants to build along the interstate. This was actually approved in 2015. Their approval expired, and so they had to go through the process again. They did visit with Park and Rec once again and finalize the agreement with Park and Rec. They're required to build the access roadway that not only will serve their site, but the park as well for the extension of Gum Avenue. There wasn't any opposition at this particular request, but there was some confusion on where the tower was going to go, and I think we resolved that at the meeting. I think everyone's aware that it's going to be pretty much as far away from the homes that are located there to the south as it possibly could. It's up, kind of hugs up against, if you see your site plan, hugs up against the bridge and 10th Avenue East, kind of out of the way for the park area as well. It's even off the edges of parking area. So with that, the planning commission and staff would recommend approval of 37-2019.
Okay, this is 37-2019. The only comment I would have is, like in our packets, planning and zoning, we get the site. Commissioners here have no site plan.
Oh.
Yeah, there's no attachments whatsoever.
Okay.
So that's something that in the future, that these locations, we don't have site plans for any of this stuff tonight.
Hmm.
No.
Because what we typically do is just clarify, we typically take the planning commission packets, pull out the information that doesn't pertain to what you're doing.
All we have is the resolutions.
Okay. Oh, we're sorry. And usually I have a picture up there, and I did words instead because there were so many pictures, so.
And there was some initial confusion on this tower because when they, when they sent out the site plan to the residents there, where they marked it on the map, was not the correct marking of the actual tower. The tower's right next to the highway and to the off-ramp, so.
Mr. President, I have a question on this here. Not on this one specifically, but on any communication towers that we put up, can they interfere with other wireless services that are provided to the citizens? And if they can, do we have anything protection in there where they may have to remove their tower?
I believe, Commissioner Steiner, that it's an FCC regulation. We wouldn't get involved with the interference of communication, so I think if there was, then that would be the avenue that they would have to go through. I mean, we encourage them to co-locate, we encourage them, we require them that if we need a co-location site for emergency services, that they provide that. We don't really get into the lack or the ability of their facility interfering with another facility, because if AT&amp;T Tower versus a Sprint Tower or whatever, we usually, usually that's out of the local government's review and control.
The feds are investigating that.
If there's a problem, though, it should be brought up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Okay, looking for any more comments or questions? If not, I'd look for a motion on 37-2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further questions, comments for Mr. Hadley on this wireless communications tower located at 1398 Gum Avenue? Hearing no questions, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have one other communication tower, a Tiger Tower, which is at 3131 Energy Drive. Mr. Hadley, can you just explain, like this other tower, that's a very encapsulated tower, the first one we just approved. This one is different. The Tiger Towers are different. You want to do just a little explanation on those?
Sure, thank you. Yes, Mr. President. The first tower was, was more of just the bands of wiring, more of a monopole, typical, it kind of fits in like it does at the rec center, and they use that in a more populated area. This other one, it, what was the address again? 3131 Energy Drive, it's in an industrial area, and it has a higher coverage area that it's projected to, you know, to, for the people to utilize it. So it doesn't require the same stealth mode. So it's because of the zone that it's in and because of the area it's covering, so it's 150 feet tall.
150 feet compared to 80 for the other one.
Right, yeah, so it's considerably taller, it's less, it would fit in not very well within the residential areas, and that's why they actually put those in those areas, so.
We have one that just went up in a residential area that's a Tiger Tower, and I think we really need to look at, requiring these stealth towers in residential areas.
Yeah.
We have one out at Roar's that just went up out there, in that new subdivision, that's a Tiger Tower, and it's ugly.
How high is it?
I don't know, it's probably 100 feet, probably, maybe not quite that high, but it's got all the antennas hanging out all over it, and, you know, and...
Yeah.
I think when it's a predominantly residential area, not out in an industrial area, I think we need to require that they be the stealth tower. I mean, I don't think we give them a choice, so. Just my thoughts on it, I mean, they just don't look good, you know, and once they're there, there's no really getting rid of them, so.
Okay, and this is, you want to proceed with the recommendations?
Sure, yeah, this went through the same planning and zoning meeting November 20th. There was no opposition or comment on this particular application. Staff and the planning commission would recommend approval of Resolution 38-2019.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. This is 38-2019. It is a wireless communication tower, a Tiger Tower at 3131 Energy Drive. Any questions for Mr. Hadley? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Hadley? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have nothing from building in code this evening, so Mr. Gillick's up, and he has a presentation from Stark Development. Welcome.
Well, thank you, President Decker and commissioners for allowing me to come and give you kind of a little update on Stark Development. Typically, we do these a little earlier on. We had kind of a busy fall with, we hosted the Economic Development Conference in town, and so we had economic developers from all over the state, as well as some of those resources, come to Dickinson for a three-day conference in October. And so it was a great, it was, for us, it was a nice event. It was able to showcase a little bit of what we do. It's been since, I think, 2004 since that conference has been in Dickinson, and it was, it was really nice for us to be able to kind of showcase what we've done. And of course, a lot has happened in Dickinson since 2004, so it was a very busy conference trying to get some of those in. So we had tours of Baker Boy, Stephis, KMM, and Fluffy Fields in there, as well as, you know, several presentations from local businesses that were part of the program as well. So I included with what I just handed out is a little summary of some of the things that, that we've accomplished during the year, and, you know, I want to, I guess, first off, thank the commission for their support of Stark Development and, and standing behind what we do. I'd like to thank Commissioner Frederick for being our liaison from the commission on our board and serving. Commissioner Trustum has also been on the, in the board in the past, and so has Commissioner Steiner. And so, you know, I think it's been nice to have that little bit of cohesiveness between what we do and, and hear from the city and be able to accommodate that. And so it's, it's been nice. I, you know, with one thing I, you know, with especially Commissioner Walla, and now that some are not so involved with our board, I'd like to just, you know, try and make sure that you're up to date with things that go on too. And so I'll try and update you throughout the, throughout the year as well, but it's a good opportunity for me to give you a quick little update on, on things that we've done. When you talk about economic development, it's really a story of other people's stories, and our success is typically measured by the businesses we help and the, and the success that we bring. And so one of the things that, you know, we've been working a lot on is highlighting some of our businesses that we work with. And so we've been working with a local video producer, Book Multimedia, and putting some videos together. You may have caught a video we just released on Baker Boy, and that was, part of that was just, I think many of our community and many of, many in our community don't really understand what a modern manufacturing facility is like and what that looks like, and that, that facility is right here in Dickinson. And so it's a glimpse in that facility, kind of seeing what they do and how they operate their facility and the technology they have there. You can actually see what 22,000 donuts an hour looks like coming off their donut line, which is somewhat impressive that that's happening right here in Dickinson. That's a series that we plan on continuing to highlight businesses as we kind of move forward, and so kind of keep an eye out for some of those. Some of our programs and things I wanted to visit about a little bit because we've hit some pretty nice milestones recently, and our, when I, I'll almost be three years in this position as Executive Vice President, and when I started, we were, we tried, we adopted a program for facade improvements, and it's been a really good program for us. And to date, we've done about $462,000 in grants from Stark Development for that program. The interesting note to that is that basically leveraged or contributed to about $4.7 million in community development. And when we built that program, we wanted to build it on a 50/50 match, so whatever we put in, that was matched by the, by the recipient. And I think it's also, I mean, it's interesting to note that that's kind of returned tenfold on us, which is, which is nice to see that development. And I think we're, with, with some of the traction that we're getting there, you're starting to see it around town, and I think, I think it's, it's also creating a little bit of word-of-mouth buzz that, you know, how did you get to that point, and how do you get to that point? And, and we've had a lot more traffic that's been coming in, and that program's been extremely successful. I've listed on the, on the report some of the ones that we've done this year in 2019. Another thing that I was fairly aggressive about when we, when I started was expanding the Pace and Flex Pace program usage within this, within the city and the area. It's Pace and Flex Pace is an interest buy-down program through the Bank of North Dakota, and it basically allows for a grant from the Bank of North Dakota for doing business in North Dakota. And so this year to date, we've done a little, almost $20 million in projects through the Pace and Flex Pace programs. Our involvement was about $960,000 in those interest buy-downs, but I think here again, the important part to know is that, that leveraged about $2 million from the Bank of North Dakota that came into the community that was a grant from the Bank of North Dakota. And so it's, it's really a neat program, it's an interesting program, and it's a program that I think the rest of the state doesn't necess, I mean, we haven't maybe capitalized on it as much as the rest of the state. And as we try and keep telling our story about the West and how we're developing the western side of the state, I think it's important that we take advantage of some of these and provide some of those opportunities back to our businesses and, and local industry. With that program, I listed some of the ones that we've, we've been involved with there. The one, interesting one, and especially some of you that have had the opportunity to sit on my board and know Floyd Hertz, he was extremely happy when we did 701 meets because he has been after a meat market forever, and so that's, that was a highlight for, for him at least to make that motion for our board. You can see that through the Pace and Flex Pace efforts, we've retained or created about 700 jobs within the community. Another one that I think we're, we're extremely proud of is, as many of you know, the daycare shortage is, is substantial, and, you know, we're always working to try and come up with solutions to that, and I think as we, also in your packet is our current economy at a glance for this month, and unemployment is at 1.7%, and so it's crazy low. And part of that is how do we attract people to the community? And then the ones that we have here that may be part of our workforce but are choosing to stay home because of, of daycare concerns, we awarded a $100,000 grant to the Learning Ladder preschool for relocating their facility, which was currently a, or which was previously a group facility, to a new building and up their license to 140 kids. That was another big project for us that, that saw substantial dent in there. We just are working on closing on a Flex Pace for that building as well with them, and when I was out there this couple of weeks ago, I guess, they were, their targeted growth was by the end of 2020 to be at their 140 kid capacity and they're just shy of 60 as of right now. And some of that is, they've pretty much made that in kind of a managed growth streak as they go through the next year and a half from when we approved it, just mostly to find personnel, I mean, to be able to find that workforce to be able to, to supply for those kids. But cool building, a great building, and quite possibly would not have happened without our help on that project, and that would have been a huge loss for the community. And, you know, we're actively pursuing additional group and center facilities. We still have a $1,000 grant for group and center facilities per child of license that you apply for or increase amount of licenses. So that's been a good program, but it's, we still need to, we still have a lot of work. Social services, I think the last time I asked, they were still about 1,000 kids short. So that's a lot that we need to make up. We continue to work with our entrepreneurial programs and try and develop some of those entrepreneurs from within. You know, a few of you have been to some of our startup events. We've recently formed a committee around those events to help better identify content and the resources and discussions that those will provide. The SBDC has also appointed or hired a new advisor for our area. Ujol has been hired. He is coming to us from, I guess, Utah via Bangladesh was his original home, and so he's kind of getting his feet on the ground, which is a service that we've sorely missed in our community over the last few years. Our SCORE group is another group that's, that's been extremely active in, in the community, and I would certainly like to thank Dean Rummel locally for taking that on and providing that service. The SCORE group is a group that is, used to go after the acronym. I think they're trying to get away from the acronym, but it makes more sense with the acronym is that they're the senior core of retired executives, and it really is a mentoring group, and they provide a lot of overlap services with what the SBDC does, but it's a, it's also a great service to bring back to businesses that are in existence and be able to kind of come back and, and look at your business, look at a, you know, from the perspective of where you are, where you could go, what, what, what your business is doing. And so that's a extremely good service to have as well within the community. As, you know, President Decker and I have been working on workforce recruitment as well. We had a first meeting of a committee that we had put together, and we really came down and identified a few key areas that we need to do a better job of and, and really target. And so of those three areas that we, we came up with is, is really, we need to do a better job locally. We have a lot of, if we, we have a lot of jobs obviously out there, and so if somebody attracts somebody from the outside and they apply, we need to make sure that if they aren't the right fit for that position, that we are able to tie them into another local business. So that communication amongst businesses really needs to evolve, and we need to develop that and, and bring that forward. I think secondly, we need to, you know, do a better job selling ourselves and communicating who Dickinson is and who we are, what we represent, what are the opportunities here, what does our community look like? And so that's been some of the things we've been working on with some video work as well. Thirdly, I think as a community, we also need to really recognize the new people that are coming to the community. And, and I think there's a lot of, we're seeing a lot of new people in the community, and I think with that, we really need to make a concerted effort to be as welcoming as possible. And there's some ways of doing that. Some of the things that were presented at Main Street Summit, or, yeah, Main Street Summit here a month or so ago was, you know, maybe it's simply taking people out to lunch and, and really getting people to have the ability to understand how they can fit into our community and where that, where that synergy lies with what their talents are, what their hobbies are, make them feel at home. We've had several companies that we've interviewed that have talked about people that have left, that they were able to recruit here but had left. And, you know, we, we hear it probably all too often that it was, they weren't not fitting in, or it was, they were lonely, or, you know, something came up. And so, you know, I think one of the things that we need to call to action is to really be aware of that. You know, we get, we get very kind of complacent in our day-to-day lives and seeing people come and go, and, and, you know, really bringing back some of that hometown feel that, you know, welcome people and, and really trying to understand people where they're coming from.
Mr. Gillick?
Yes.
Touch on a little bit. That sounds to me like you need a lot more involvement from Chamber of Commerce with these people. Talk about talking to them, meeting them, see what they do, putting it out there. Are you doing anything with the Chamber of Commerce?
You know, and, and I don't know that the Chamber of Commerce currently has, there used to be an, well, they have the Ambassador Committee, which is for local businesses and kind of welcoming new businesses.
They go out and they meet them, take a picture, and does it in there?
Yep. There, you know, there's kind of that, you know, void of almost, we need the welcome wagon, you know, to be able to provide. They have some packets and things that, that get information out there, but sometimes it's that personal contact that really needs to be developed. Some of the communities, I think, north of us, Williston, Watford, I think they actually put on like a, almost like an event or a trade show where they bring in nonprofits, organizations, for people to just kind of get a better sense of what the community has to offer. And so it is something that, you know, I think between, you know, the DDA, the Chamber, Stark Development, I think it's something that we, we definitely need to take a closer look at and really identify, how do we build that, build those relationships and make people feel welcome? I mean, I think we're, you know, we're seeing the population is, is growing, the, you know, the baby numbers, if you look at our economy at a glance, is growing, and we're ahead of about 14 kids ahead of last year for births again this year. And so, you know, some of that is all developing, but we need to, we need to just try and do a better job of making sure we engrain those people into the community and, and really find, find their niche, find, you know, develop their passions into something that we can, we can really work with and, and use them, use, use that to our full advantage and, and keep them here.
And that, when we sat down and talked about it, that's, that's something we have to do as a group effort. We just can't put it on the chamber. We just can't put it on one organization to do it. We have to, we have to make this a group effort, be it if we're having, you know, the Heritage Festival up at the Banshell, and, and when, you know, when I went up to the Heritage Festival, I, it, there were so many people that I did not even recognize. I mean, I would say 90% of the people I had never seen before.
And for those of us that have been here a long time, you know, the Heritage Festival to us was the Ukrainians and the Czechs and, you know.
It wasn't that way this time.
No, you know, it is one of those that is, I mean, it's, it's super cool to see and, and, you know, somehow to embrace that and take advantage of that diversity that we, we have here. I guess, you know, lastly, again, President Decker and I have been working on the Complete Count Committee, and I'm sure many of you are, are fairly aware of that process and how that looks and what that looks like, but we have been meeting regularly since April, and we have assigned and have a fair amount of people representing some of those and hoping to help us tap into some of those hard-to-count populations. I think with the, with the census to date, with this current census, we're going to have some unique challenges in the sense that, number one, it's going to be hard for people to get access to the actual census, to fill in the blanks. On the other side of it, we also are going to, with 1.7% unemployment, we're not going to be able to hire local people to go door-to-door to help with this census. And so we're going to have a huge problem with just someone from outside the community that's going to be standing outside your door, knocking on your door, trying to get your attention to fill out a census. And so those are things that we need to really try and do a better job. You're going to start seeing some things going out within some of the publications that we're involved with after the first of the year, some editorials and things that are, that'll be out, just kind of identifying some of the things with the census. I've included one sheet that was kind of a question and answer sheet that was partially derived from the census website, as well as some local content that was added into it, just to dispel some of those myths of the census, because I think that is a lot of, a lot of what happens with the census is there's a lot of myths that, that data is going to be used somewhere against me or however that works, and it's, it's important for everyone to know that that census data is sealed for 72 years. So it's, working on the census. And then I guess lastly, I would just like to, you know, just reiterate, you know, just looking at, you know, our sales tax numbers, we're almost where we are, where we were last year at the end of November with those numbers coming in, which is, which is really a good sign for us. We had a couple of really good months here in the last few months, and so those are just nice signs of things that we kind of keep track of as well as, as somewhat of a, you know, a floating metric of, of some of the things that are going on. And there's a lot of business development, there's a lot of new activity within our office coming and going, a lot of people trying to get involved and, and start something, and which is, which is nice to see. I think our downtown is getting a lot of buzz lately, and we're starting to see a lot of activity with some of those properties changing hands or being developed, and I think that's going to be a net positive for everybody to, to see that and, and build that and bring that forward. And so it's, it's been a fun year. It's been a fun three years, and each year gets a little more interesting and a little more we bring to the table. We, we were able to get an intern finally, that's going to start after the first of the year, so they'll be able to help us a little bit with some of the census work and, and some of our other work and just gathering and, and putting some data together. So that's, that's also good for an office of two. But beyond that, I would certainly extend thanks again for letting me visit again with you and give you a little bit of an update of what's going on with Stark Development. I would certainly open up for any questions, and, and likewise, if you want to stop in and talk about things going on in Dickinson, I'd gladly sit down and visit with any of you regarding that. So thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Gillick, for the report and the updates, and any questions, commissioners?
Mr. President, I, Mr. Gillick, first of all, thanks for everything you do. It's good to get the numbers and so on. For the person that's thinking about a business loan, and I don't want in-depth here, but maybe living in public, you can kind of give them a clearer idea. I'm a businessman, I come in and I need $500,000 to start this business. How do you tie in the Bank of North Dakota grant plan, pace loan, and the interest buy-down or off? Can you explain that so anybody out there listening might say, you know, I need to understand that there?
So, you know, Bank of North Dakota is basically the, the foundation of the Flex Pace and Pace program. And so the, the difference between Flex Pace and Pace, to hear the terminology, Pace is limited to primary sector. So it's, it's got some higher limits that you can loan against it, but it, but primary sector is defined as a business that brings in over 50% of their income from outside the state, so they're bringing new wealth into the state.
With no competition.
So, um, you know, Bank of North Dakota is basically the, the foundation of the Flex Pace and Pace program. And so, the, the difference between Flex Pace and Pace, to hear the terminology, Pace is limited to primary sector. So it's, it's got some higher limits that you can loan against it, but it, but primary sector is defined as a business that brings in over 50% of their income from outside the state. So they're bringing new wealth into the state.
With no competition?
There can be, there can be competition for primary sector. Um, you know, and primary sector's been loosened up a little bit. Commerce will define, you apply to Commerce for primary sector designation. And so, they will ultimately decide how you fit in, if you, whether you can qualify for primary sector or not. Um, so really, the difference, um, between Flex Pace and Pace is that designation alone and then the limits at which you can borrow. Beyond that, the programs are pretty much identical. Um, what we offer with the Bank of North Dakota and that program is a interest buy-down. Um, the program will buy down a maximum of 5% interest to a floor of 1% interest. Um, the, um...
Is that what you call the grant part of it, then?
The grant is the, is the, you know, and so Flex Pace, it's capped at 200,000 from the Bank of North Dakota. Pace is capped at $500,000 from the Bank of North Dakota, just depending on the level of, of investment in the community, um, or the project size. And so, you know, right now, we're in that bubble where we're seeing 6% loans come in and higher, so we are maximizing that out at, at the 5% buy-down. And so, it's a tool, you know, we also use, um, you know, our resource, our local regional councils have, have some funds. There's, um, there's a, I mean, there's a fair arsenal of, of tools to kind of go out. You know, we've used our facade improvement fund as, you know, a source of, of cash for somebody to help get a small business going. Um, you know, as long as they're matching that dollar with, um, some other money in there to, to make that work, um, you know, ours, our money is cash in the equation as it looks, as it's looked at with the bank. So it, it is kind of, I mean, there's some neat programs we can put together. Um, we do, we work with quite a few different partners. Obviously, the local lenders are, you know, our first point of contact. Beyond that, there's several other points of contact throughout the state that we can kind of get involved with that, when we, especially when we need some of those more creative projects and kind of think outside the box a little bit. Um, and we've done, you know, and some of those that we've really done a lot with, um, you know, one boutique ended up even using some crowdfunding on top of a Flex Pace that was, you know, relatively minimal Flex Pace for what we would consider typical, but, um, you know, at the end of the day, for her financials and her pro forma, it made a huge difference. I guess to put in Flex Pace in the buy-down in perspective, if, um, you know, a half-a-million-dollar loan essentially at a 6% interest, you know, your monthly payment is virtually cut in half by taking advantage of that interest buy-down over the first several years. So it's a, it's an incredibly successful program, and it's a, it's a huge advantage for us in North Dakota to be able to have that program to use to our advantage.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gillik?
Thank you, Mr. Gillik.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to public issues of city concern not on the agenda. If you're a citizen of Dickinson and you have an issue of city concern that was not on our agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let us know, uh, your concern. Anyone have any public issues not on the agenda? Anyone? All right. We'll close the public issues of city concern not on the agenda. Uh, Commissioners, do you have anything you wish to discuss? A couple of things that I, I want to cover, if nobody else has got anything. Uh, one, I, I'd like to commend, uh, city staff on, uh, the snow removal. Uh, I think they did an excellent job. There are still some processes we're going to be looking at to, uh, to make them a little bit better, a little more efficient. Uh, and, but I think overall, they attacked it very well and did an awesome job. Um, the other issue is we, we need to have a special meeting to decide the process of a grievance appeal. And I'll just kind of let, uh, City Attorney Kreip discuss that a little bit.
Thank you, President Decker. The city code has outlined a procedure for employees to go through the process of appealing disciplinary action taken against them. The problem is there's a, a gap in what happens if the city administrator is the one that issues a, a written warning. If it's any other city supervisor that issues a written warning to someone, they appeal that, the employee can appeal that to the city administrator, but the code stops there. And if there is any other disciplinary action, no matter who issues that, if it's, uh, anything greater than a written warning, those all go to civil service. And so, there's no appeal win, there's no appeal process in the code for what happens if the city administrator would issue a written warning to an employee. And so, that's the, the gap we need to close. I discussed with President Decker that my preference would be to have you all discuss what process you think is appropriate, um, decide on something, and then I can draft an ordinance to change the code to implement that. And whether that's, they all go to civil service, if it's, um, a mirror of the city administrator decides everything for written warnings other than what he does, and then the President of the Commission would decide anything that the mayor, or, excuse me, that the city administrator does, I don't think you want those to come to the whole commission, um, because if it was anything greater than that, it wouldn't come to you right away. It would go to the civil service. So, just some discussion would be helpful, some direction for me so that I can close that gap in the code.
So we need about a half an hour of special meeting?
Uh, as soon as possible, right?
Well, I am out Thursday and Friday, but Monday's not good. President Decker, I suppose the other option is, I mean, we finished relatively early now. We're not making any decisions today as terms of, if you all want to come to a consensus, give me some direction, and then we'd actually put an ordinance on the agenda. That might be the other.
And we could do that right now. I mean, if we have a consensus, if, if that's a step like what Mrs. Kreip, Ms. Kreip described, that right now there's that gap, that if, because of it, it is just a written warning that by the city administrator, it just comes to me to make the determination of where it goes, or...
Yeah. Whatever you guys decide.
I don't know, there's a real other option, is there?
Well, I don't think there is.
I mean, unless we bring it in front of the whole commission, which I don't think is necessary.
It has, it doesn't, the written warning doesn't rise to that level, because then it would go to civil service, you know, before it would come to us.
Right. If it was a suspension or, you know, leave without pay. Right. Those all would go to civil service. And so, you, it doesn't, I don't think logically makes sense to take a lesser disciplinary action, skip that whole process, and bring it to the full commission. So I think your options are, either it goes to, uh, the President of the Commission to review that action and, and make a determination, or you can send it to civil service. I think there's, I don't know that that's, um, I think the reason we avoided that in the past was because there can be a fair amount of written warnings that are issued. And so, if everyone takes them, if the city administrator gives someone a written warning and that goes to civil service, I think you have to change the code so that any written warning goes to civil service, so that it's the same. So that's why, uh, my recommendation would be that you send it to the President of the Commission. I think that most closely mirrors the intent of the code as it's written.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Steiner? I guess that will be the recommendation, then.
So I'll draft an ordinance, and we'll get that on future agendas for, for approval.
Okay. So we don't need that special?
Is there to be an amendment to our HR policy, then, or...
Commissioner Frederick, it would be, uh, an ordinance changed for Chapter 29 where the HR policy is codified.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that was easy.
Yeah. Anything else? Anything, Commissioners? Hearing nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are...